All right, welcome Meramec. This is the Meramec Village District Board of Commissioners meeting, October 16, 2023. Call the meeting to order at 5:02. At this time, we'll rise to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic, which stands on nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good. So public participation to this meeting is offered by webinar. You can join the webinar by going to MVDwater.org. And on today's agenda, there is a web link there, or you can call 646-876-9923. Enter the webinar ID 81743270235. As a courtesy, Meramec, he's also recording the meeting. It will be posted on their website. And I believe Cable Channel 6 is where it runs these days. So we have four commissioners here. Aaron to my left, my right, and John to his right. Ken is running late. He may join us later by Zoom, most likely. So we're gonna, we're gonna start today's session with Jamie Emery from Emery and Garrett. And he's got a few updates to bring us up to speed on. We're doing that because Jamie's schedule is running a little bit later. I think he's got a meeting. Mandy, you have a comment or something?
I just wanted to make sure you could hear me.
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good. Thanks for letting us know. So, all right. So with that being said, we'll start with Jamie. Go ahead. You got the floor.
Okay, thanks. Good, good evening, everyone. Hope all is well. I, I wanted to give you a little bit of update on several fronts. One was that on September 19th, we met with the New Hampshire DOT in a group of individuals, mostly state senators and state reps to talk about the need for salt reduction at the intersection of Continental Boulevard and Industrial Drive. And I just want to share my screen if I could real quick.
We all said, Jamie.
Okay. You can see my screen. Let me know.
Yeah, we see it.
Okay, so this is the this is the slide presentation I presented at, in front of these individuals. And I just wanted to share with you that the DOT, at this meeting, Maureen Mooney had pulled us together. And she had Nancy Murphy from the State Senate, Barbara Healy, Paul McCully from the, from the town, Wendy Thomas, Bill Boyd, Jean Nodder, and then three people from the DOT, David Rigrock, which is the Assistant Commissioner. So we had a fairly high level person at the meeting, as well as John Cochran, who was the Operations Manager, or one of them, and Alan Hanscom. And so what you see on the screen, I'm not going to give the whole presentation. I'm just going to walk, just two seconds walking through this. The purpose of this meeting to me was to make sure that the DOT understood that we were in crisis mode management. And so we, we talked a little bit about, you know, what's happened over the last 30 years and the issue of how we need to reduce salt. We talked about the salt crunch that we've got to get rid of. We talked about why it's important to MVD because it's more expensive than the removal of PFOS and other VOCs and metals and iron, manganese and arsenic. We talked about the MVD having lost one production well due to elevated sodium chloride levels, which were directly result of the salting of roads in the nearby area. We discussed the fact that MVD had a 1,000 gallon a minute well that was replaced at about a cost with everything added into it, probably about $2 million. I showed them the wellhead protection area, which is, if you all recall, the MVD 9, MVD 3, MVD 2, blue areas, the recharge area for those wells. I talked about the sources of, of salt that comes in, and this area that's highlighted in red is the area where the DOT actually salts at the intersection of Continental Boulevard Industrial Drive. I indicated that in 2011, we had calculated 552 tons of salt were being added into this watershed annually. And that since 2012, we believe that the salt load has increased. In other words, we're not getting less salt in this watershed, we're getting more salt. I showed him this graph, which we all know about, which shows the change, you know, the increasing levels of sodium chloride in well MVD 3, what led to it's taking, taking it off. I showed them this table that showed a thousand percent increase since 1992 in MVD 3 and sodium and 900% in chloride. And then I said, so where are we today after all of the, you know, the monitoring and the discussions and the meetings and so forth? And I let everyone know, the politicians in the state, that the heavy salting that occurs at the intersection of Continental Boulevard Industrial Drive has led this year to the highest chloride levels we've ever recorded in that local aquifer, as measured in monitoring well 3DD1. I showed him the area that we're concerned about. Again, this is the Continental Boulevard, and this is Industrial Drive. Again, this is the area that the DOT handles from this point down and across and up to this, in this region. And this was the graph that essentially made everybody in the, in the meeting gasp. From 2021 to 2023, this is the average chloride level measured from four periods, spring, summer, fall, and winter. The average chloride level has reached in this well, DV1, almost 1,000 parts per million, with the highest measured at on March 30th of 1,200. Sodium, as you can see here, is upwards of 600 milligrams per liter on average for those four seasonal samples in 2023. We got their attention because, at least at that moment, and I said basically to DOT, we have to reduce the mass quantity of salt used at the intersection of Continental Boulevard and Industrial Drive. And we can't do it without DOT helping us. It has to happen. So after some discussion of, you know, you know, best management practices and so forth, I said, look, we can talk all we want about best management practices, but we have about 20 pictures that show salt drifts at this intersection. The ironic part about this is the MVD has their office outside this intersection, so they get to see every day what's going on. And this salt is unacceptable. This salt drift is unacceptable. And that is what's, all that salt goes into the aquifer is why we're seeing these concentrations continue to go up. So I made the direct and specific request to DOT to change from using the rock salt to brine in all of our sensitive groundwater protection areas. It's responsible, it's the environmentally responsible thing to do. It's the safest anti-icing tool we have, and it'll save everybody's, everybody money. So from that standpoint, all, many of the politicians were interested and engaged. The DOT said they would do everything they could. They wanted to cooperate. And at this point, Dawn and I spoke this afternoon. I've sent an email to the State Senator Nancy Murphy to get an understanding as to whether or not they were able to get a bill passed or a bill written into the Senate that would request brine to be used at this intersection by the DOT and that temporary employees would not be used to plow. One thing we found out in this meeting is that 60, it's 60 openings at the DOT for plowing, which means that sometimes people are being hired that are temporary contractors who may or may not be trained in salt reduction. That may be understanding that they're in a sensitive wellhead protection area, that we are, you know, in the fight of our lives to get salt reduced in this particular intersection. The other thing that came out of this was that we have, Ron's been working hard to get the DOT to cooperate with us to allow our signs they put on the DOT roads. And they agreed that they would cooperate with that, and Ron met with them last week to, to begin to get the, we've got all the other signs in for the town roads and the other community roads, but this is the one thing that we had not been able to do. So I wanted you to be aware of this. I then sent this presentation to, the hard card presentation to the rest, the state reps and the state senators. And I also sent this to DES, of which, whereupon I got a call back or an email right away from Brandon's current, who said that they would do whatever they could to help us. And I said, all we need is for the DES to push DOT to stop the use of salt in this particular area because DOT still remains hesitant to use brine. So I wanted you to be aware of that because this was a, I thought it was a very critical meeting. It was a very deliberate approach to and direct approach to DOT. And I can't tell you whether or not we're going to get a change here, but I can tell you that I was, you know, that I, that we certainly have their attention. So I don't, you know, that, I just wanted to give you an update on, on that particular meeting, which was about a month ago. A little less than a month ago. Then the next I have any questions on that? Yeah?
Yeah, yeah, please. Who, who from MVD was at that meeting?
Ron and Jill. And yeah, Dawn was, Dawn was in Italy.
Right.
Greece.
Oh, Greece, excuse me.
I'm not sure if I missed the memo of that meeting. I know I missed the meeting the other day because it was overseas, but I mean, if you guys were
quick, yeah.
I mean, if you guys were there, then I'm fine. But to me, I feel a little bit taken by surprise, to be honest. But if you were in the loop, then I'm fine with it.
It was
You were there.
It happened, I was there, it happened really quick.
Okay.
It was
If you were there, that's fine. For me, for me, that's fine.
Yeah, I responded to a request to be present to, to discuss this with them. So, and I think it was set up, I think it was set up originally by Maureen.
Right. Yeah, Jamie, just so you know, Nancy Murphy is, she, she wears two hats, basically. She's a state rep. She's not a senator, she's a state rep, and she's also on the town council. And I think Shannon Chanley, who was also on that email, that's the state, that's our local senator at the State House. So Nancy's the state rep, not the senator. And then, so you mentioned that, that, was it revealed at that meeting that the DOT was using subcontracted salt applicators? That, I don't think we were aware of that.
I wasn't aware of it, and I don't know, they didn't commit to saying that that's what was happening there after we showed the slide. But they did say that they are struggling with, you know, filling spaces to plow. And then I think the question was raised, well, how many people are you missing? And they said about 60. And, and they said they can't pretend, they can't keep up with the plowing without sub, you know, subbing out contractors.
Wow, yeah.
I can't say it's every time, but typically they come through like, you know, two or three trucks, and they'll follow the whole, the whole, shoulder to shoulder and, or the, the whole lane. And typically, I want to say there is a top, a state truck with two or three subs.
Okay. And you had mentioned before that they actually go a little bit north of Industrial Drive to Greens Pond and turn around at Greens Pond.
Right around Greens Pond, and I think they, they salt every pass. They're, they're plowing and salting.
Okay. Because I, so I think the state owns just up to Industrial Drive. I thought the town owned up to Industrial Drive on the north side, and the state was Industrial Drive on the south, I'm sorry, Continental on the south.
But it's to get that
So they just take an extra little Okay.
They hit the, the eastbound ramp on the Continental, they go down, they'll turn around.
Turn the corner and then do a U-turn? Yeah. So I mean, that, that might explain if, if the subcontractors are not well, you know, trained, that might explain why that they're putting so much salt down there. I mean, we got signs that say limited salt and no salt. But they must drive right by those with the salt still being applied.
Yeah, so this is, this red area here is the, they go right up to this location right here and then back down. So
Yeah.
Yes. And like Ron said, they just, they just plow both ways. So, I mean, they, they
Salt, yeah.
Yeah.
So, right. Okay.
Yeah, so I wanted you to see that. And then I wanted you to be aware that I had spoken, I was invited guest speaker at the Salt Summit in Lake George, New York. And one of the discussions there is salt reduction. And so I, I used part of the Meramec story to discuss and, and share with them important elements of, you know, in order to reduce the salt loads, you know, in these aquifers that could get to critical levels, you know, that brine was, was, was important and necessary. And, and that received a lot of positive feedback. So the Meramec story is not just a local story. It's a story that's getting some more, some broad attention, which I think will only help us as we move forward to get this thing resolved. I will mention to you that in that conference, Bill Sexton, who is the Managing Director of WIT, which stands, W I T, which stands for Whatever It Takes.
I like that.
Yeah, this is what it says. WIT stands for Whatever It Takes to Develop, Support, and Empower Sustainable Solutions That Enable People, Businesses, and the Environment to Coexist and Thrive. And Phil Sexton is the Sustainability Consultant that Fidelity has hired for salt reduction. So he and I got together and, and, and it's very good because he really appreciated the talk. And he really wasn't that, you know, even though Fidelity has hired him to do it, he said this presentation helped him to kind of come to terms with what they need to do at, at Fidelity. So
Yeah.
He said he had my commitment to ratchet this up another, you know, to continue to ratchet this up in our, in the favor of the MVD. So of the, not the MVD, but the environment and groundwater quality and drinking water quality. So I think we, we were made, able to really make some, some gains there. And I will say, one of the other things at this conference that I really appreciated was there were municipalities there. Mike Farrell was there. He was the Highway Superintendent for the Town of Peru, which is about 7,000 people. And he shared that he's been transferring from, you know, crystallized salt to brine. And that has saved him over $300,000 in his budget. Now, this is a small community. Washington County, which has 60,000 people, have converted from crystallized salt to brine. And they're, they're moving towards savings, you know, towards a million dollars in their salt use. So, you know, these are stories that are not, these are real event, you know, people that are out there trying to make a difference in salt use. And so I plan on using that experience and the number that are out there to share with the DOT, you know, to, to say, look, I know Public Works in Meramec is working towards that. They're looking towards brine trucks. I mean, the city of Dover just put $165,000 in their CIP budget to buy brine trucks. And because they're in the same boat as you are, they depend on groundwater for 100% of their supply, and salt is constantly creeping up. So.
Jamie, can you point where that monitoring well was with the elevated chlorides in the map?
Yeah, the
On that map?
Right there.
Oh, okay.
Checking.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it is the smoking gun for the DOT, right? Because it's, this is what they're doing right here. And, you know, this thing, you know, they've managed, from 2013, we've been doing this for a long time, right? And it's when I hear, you know, we, we, this is why we collect the data, because when someone says we're doing the same thing and we're not changing our practices, but the data says, yes, you are, then, you know, we've got to come to some kind of understanding together. I mean, it's, it's not a blame game. It is an education game that says we need to change our culture and how we use this salt. That's how it is. It's just got to change. And you know, we've made that change over in 7 and 8. So you know that we've got, we look back here, you know, let's see, I think I have that somewhere here. Maybe I don't have it on this.
I don't know. Yeah.
But you know that 7 and 8 changed over. So we have, let me see if I got that.
The trend started going back down again after.
The trend went down once we started changing the use, once Home Depot, that was a big one, once Home Depot stopped, you know, using as much salt as they had in the past, we started making progress. So I'm trying to find where, oh, here we go. Let me see if I can put that up here just quickly so you can see this. The computer's got too many things open, so it's screaming. I think I had a I hear, here, here's, here's a 7 and 8. So you can see in 1999, we were going up to 2011, and remember, we did that project for the state. And we, we got people to listen to us about changing the use of salt, and salt is continuing to drop all the way through, you know, in the last 10 years. So it can happen, and that's why we have to continue to fight because this is something, you know, in my presentation in New York, it's like, all these things create a problem for the environment, drinking water health, fish species, invasive plants, corrosivity to the roads, bridges, highways, trucks. And yet, we as a society decide to, to keep hestering ourselves by throwing this stuff down and not managing it. And it doesn't make any sense. And so, you know, we're at the point of really, I'm fired up about this beyond measure because it's got to be something that's going to change. And Meramec has got to be, we, we have got to change it. Because MVD 9, you know, is, if we don't get the salt load out there, at some point, MVD 9 is going to be, in my view, could potentially see elevated levels, maybe not to this level, but it probably is not to this level.
Well, it's all, it's all down gradient, you know. Well, 3, 2, and 9 are all down gradient from here, traveling along the, that it could brook. So, right, that's the way it's going, you know?
Right. So that's something I want to talk about too in a minute. So the next thing I wanted to let you know is the watershed protection grant that we applied for has been approved, the Governor's Council has approved it. We're now at the point where we're going to get a, I've got to finalize a contract with MVD. But we have a kickoff meeting on, next week, on the 24th, and I wanted to ask anybody in the council if they want to participate in that. It's just a beginning kickoff. It'll be, this will be less technical and more administrative. But I believe it's the 24th at 3:00 PM. And if it gets changed, I'll let you know. But that's, that's the game plan now. And that will be with DES, Steve Landry. And just, just to reiterate, the goal of this, this is the first of its kind. There, there's no other watershed management program that's ever been focused on sodium and chloride. It's always been phosphorus or other nutrients and so forth. So the state is very excited about this program and where it's going to lead. I think we'll provide additional funding ultimately for Meramec to achieve and maybe purchase brine trucks and, and, and equipment that's necessary to reduce salt throughout the wellhead protection areas. So those were all good. That's all I had to say, really. I did want to share one other thing, if I can find it.
Yeah, can you send, can you send that link or something to that meeting? When you said 24?
Yes, when it gets said, I can send it to you for sure. Yep.
All right.
And then the last thing I wanted to get permission from is that what's up?
I'd be willing to zoom in for at least an hour.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be great. And I'm, I'm thinking that they would be, they would love to have, they're going to really enjoy having the, the board engaged in this process. So I think the more, you know, more participation, the better.
Um, can I ask a question about the DOT meeting for a minute?
Sure.
Did you get the the feeling in the meeting that the DOT was looking to put us in the middle between them and the town of Meramec for taking over Continental? Because I know that's a long-term DOT Meramec issue.
Yeah, so my take on it is this. The DOT doesn't, I don't think the DOT believes they can do what we want them to do fully. And so in order to shift the responsibility, they'd like to see the town take it over.
Yeah.
My
In the middle.
Yeah, my personal view is, if the town could find it in themselves to do it, I would do it because then you're in control of your salt load, right? You know, if the town can't do it, I understand. But one of the things that came out of it, which is the first of its kind, is the DOT said, what if we took the money out of our budget that we use to salt that interchange and gave it to the town in exchange for them to do it? Right? So there'd be, you know, whatever that number of dollars, to me, if it doesn't cost the town anymore, and what I think happens is, and I can't be sure because I haven't witnessed this, but I think the state plows it, and then sometimes the town goes through there and say, may see something, and they may drop some salt there too, along their way down, down the pathway from the northern part of the town to the southern part of town. I mean, I don't know, that's true, and I'm not accusing anybody of truth, but I do know that area is getting double salted sometimes. And if there was an ability for this area to just be salted one time by one party, I think there'd be a benefit. So if the state was willing to give you the money that they spend on it, maybe plus 10% or whatever, the town might make out okay.
Well, that definitely was, was offered at the meeting because I was told that by someone else that
Yeah.
was attending as well. So we can follow up on that. Yeah.
I mean, has the town, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I know there was a lot of statements that said, under no circumstances will the town do that, but
Well, the concern is it, it kind of opens the door to, like, getting a foot in as, as far as having the town take over responsibility, which
Right. The town doesn't want maintenance of it. They don't want to take over all of it.
Because then, you know, they, they don't want to take ownership because then they got to pave the road. There's damages, they got to fix it.
Liability.
Because it's, right, I think the town stance is they never asked for Continental, the state wanted Continental.
Right.
So why should it now become the town's problem?
Okay, but if town, if the state is hiring independent contractors anyways, why can't they hire the town as an independent contractor, write the contract that way? And now it's pretty clear, you've got no ownership of it.
Well, I'm not sure if that offer was on the table.
No, I think that, I think, I think this state was like, hey, we'll give you money if you take over Continental.
Right.
I don't think they're planning
The salting, right? Not the whole
Yeah, just the salting. But I think, John, you're on to that. I think you're on to something because I don't think that's been discussed, and I think it's a great idea. And I think that if we pose that to the state to say, hey, would you be willing to let the, the town be your subcontractor? What could they lose? They, 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 then the town loses control. They're not responsible. Boom. Everybody's happy. It's a win-win.
What less than 20? They got a higher out of those 60.
I was actually asked by someone through the town if MVD employees would consider
Plowing.
Plowing and salting the road. And I said, we don't have any equipment for that. And, you know, liability wise too, but I think it makes more sense. The town is equipped with equipment.
Well, let me say, Brandon told me that when Brandon called me, he said, if you need money to be thrown at this project, let me know. So
Right, well.
You know, I, you know, obviously, that's an open-ended statement that has a lot of, you know, attachments to it. But I think his intention is right, that they consider this to be a very severe problem, and they, the DES wants to participate in the solution. And if it means that there's going to be, needs to be money involved in that, then they would work hard to try to provide that. And whether it's money for brine trucks or plow truck or whatever that might be. And whether it's money for brine trucks or plow truck or whatever that might be, it's not out of the realm of re- reasonableness that if we have an environmental problem that's at a crisis level and it requires reduction of salt, and this is the only way to go, and that might be the way to get it done. I mean, it'll happen this way, but.
As far as I know, the town is considering switching the brine. So maybe we can kill two birds with one stone and have that funding that you just mentioned from D E S. If that could go towards a salt, a brine system, equipment for the town, then maybe the town can use that equipment because there's town roads in the rest of the wellhead protection areas that should be brined instead of salted.
Yeah.
And if, if the, if the state's willing to put money towards purchasing brine equipment or brine truck, then maybe there's an incentive there that the town can actually take over some of the salting of the, the state road with some financial compensation for it or something. You know, I mean, you, I think you can work those two together. If the town can get a brine truck out of this thing, you know, without having to put it on the taxpayers' roll in the town.
I think that's the right way to go too. I think that plow guys plow and water guys water. I would not, I would not want to be wrong.
Yeah.
If I was like trying to figure out plow schedules and all this other stuff, and I just don't, I don't think that we should offer to do that. I think it would hurt our employee retention. I don't think it's a fun job. And I think the town should definitely do that and see, yes, even get them a truck.
I, so I think it's important that some of us get in touch with the town so we're on the same page, so we're not conflicting each other.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, uh, maybe there's some phone calls that are to be made.
Maybe we need to call for a meeting between the town and the state. I, I personally feel that the state should not just throw their hands in the air and say, we might not be able to deliver on this problem. They caused the problem, they should fix it. They should not delegate it to the community, not even by contracting it out, in my opinion, because I'm sure we're not the only water district or private well owner that shares that problem, right?
I think we should get all, get all the politicians together and have a meeting with the town.
Well, there's another avenue on this. There's a bill that's being considered, uh, proposed by Senator Chanley to require that the D O T can only use their equipment and not subcontracted equipment and do brine, um, de-icing in this, in this intersection. There's a bill being proposed to require that. I don't know if that's got, you know, I, I'd rather go about it without the need of a bill, but putting a bill forward is gonna show the D O T that we're serious about it, right?
Of course.
So, you know, that we're trying to attack this thing by multiple avenues and Nancy Murphy and, um, Maureen Mooney and Senator Chanley have been working on that. I think Bill Boy was involved a little bit. So there, there's definitely some discussion that needs to be had to get us all on the same page about unfolding all this so that we're all, we, we need to kind of be all on the same page and not be antagonistic in a, in a public meeting like that, right?
Right, exactly. And nobody's gonna win if, if, if there's a blame game on it. It, it, the reality is the data doesn't lie, and you gotta deal with the data and the science is the science. And and we gotta either respond to the science or we ignore it and move, you know, and start, keep spending money like, you know, M V D keep, you know, you're gonna keep spending more money, you're the recipient of the bad, of the bad, of the contaminants and, um.
And it's the same people who pay the, the, the water bill or the, you know, the tax rate, so. You know?
Well, and it's certainly not unprecedented. I mean, there's, there's towns all over the state that have another town's border comes into their road for like a quarter mile or something like that, that, you know, they're not gonna drive all the way over there to do the quarter mile. The town does it. I'm sure there's some agreement they have to do it.
They're probably. I like your idea of, you know, of being, of having the town sub it out. I don't know, there are probably some, some, you know, strings attached to the whole thing, but if, if, if the state signed off and said, yeah, you're well, you know, we're, we're signing off to a subcontractor plowing it that has no training to, and doesn't really have the incentive to reduce salt. And you bring the town in who does have the incentive to reduce salt, and they do the job, and they sign a waiver that says you're not responsible for damages. I mean, what is there to lose except less salt, right? And, um, so I, I think that there's, maybe it's something, an email that could be sent off to the assistant commissioner and said, to say, we can't, you know, and I'm not sure I'm the right person to do that, but I'd be happy to, to say to Dave, David, would you ever consider the town, you know, a- after the town says we might consider this, would you ever consider the town being the subcontractor for this, for this, this area or any area that's in the wellhead protection region? Um, so we, we need to, and Don and I talked about this, their goal has to be brine and no salt within the wellhead protection areas. It's gotta be, it's gotta be that point. And with these other towns doing it and saving a ton of money and not sacrificing safety, I mean, this is, this is the thing, it's we're, as climate change occurs and the warming of the climate goes up and we're starting to see temperatures above the fifteen degree, the storms are, you know, between fifteen and thirty five degrees, that's the sweet spot for salt, for brine. I mean, we're moving into the sweet spot for brine. We're not, you know, if it's a minus five degree snowstorm and we're getting ten inches of snow, well, then that may be a different story, but that's not what we're seeing. We're seeing the storms in that fifteen to.
Five degrees, in minus five degrees, salt doesn't work anyway.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
Hey, who is, um, who's, who's the, the invite invites to the meeting on October twenty fourth? Who's, who's going to that?
Uh, mostly D E S and, and Ron and Jill.
Is, so at this point, is it premature to get anybody from the town or anything involved in this?
Or this one, yeah, because this is an M V D, M V D D E S relationship.
Okay, all right, good. All right.
But those other things can happen with the town on, on the side, right?
I mean, Frankie, Ron, you could call Paul McKelly, right, as the town manager of Meramec. Get started between the two of you. You heard the conversation.
Yep.
Um, the two of you could collectively reach out to, you know, to the D O T. If you're on the same page one way or another, right? The two of you could collectively reach out to, 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 to D O T. And, you know, maybe get D E S also involved. And I think that's, that's all we need at the table, really. We don't need a big.
I was gonna suggest a meeting.
Delegation.
M V D and, and the town just off the bat, just, just kicking ideas back into. Get there.
Right.
Cause if they're gonna be against it, there's no sense, you know, kind of going to do. Cause they're gonna, they're probably gonna say yes.
Yeah.
Jump at the chance. Yeah, I would think.
But I, I mean, we don't need a big delegation of, of, of town councils and state reps. We need the, the responsible managers involved, getting on the same page and.
Probably Paul and Don would be a good one to get on that. The new Polk Works director.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Put an action item out there?
Yeah.
All right, Amanda, please put in, add an action item, uh, Ron, to contact Meramec Town and D P W, Town Management and D P W to prepare a meeting with, uh, New Hampshire D O T and D S to discuss
Options.
Options for keeping that area ice free.
Maintaining.
Maintaining. You know, salting or brining the, uh, the, uh, industrial highway and, um, Continental Boulevard intersection, right?
Yep.
Industrial Highway and Continental Boulevard?
Uh, intersection.
Industrial Drive and Continental Boulevard.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, uh, probably pretty quickly if we can. So if we can put that on the calendar for next month to review.
Yeah.
Amanda?
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, so I just have about three or four minutes.
Yeah.
I gotta get in another commission meeting tonight. Um. Qu- question for you is to be an action item. Um, Don had written some language, uh, there's a letter that's gonna be going out to the, uh, citizens that are in the wellhead protection area. Don had written some language that might be considered. And the question is, um, would you like me to take Don's language and the old letter and try to merge them into something that you could review and then send out?
Yeah, actually, Ron took the liberty of adding that in. I don't think you've got a coffee, but. Jamie, a copy of that. Oh, you think? In that form, yeah. All right, what was that today, probably, or?
It is, but I think it's, it's, it's redundant. There's some things in that that are now redundant. Um, I, I think you would not probably want to send it out in that kind of format.
All right.
Be honest with you, but, um, in it, you know, I, I'm happy to try to, you know, frame that a little bit, send it to you, Don and, and Ron, and have you look at it, and if you feel good about it, we'll just go from there.
I'm fine with that. If you guys are good.
Yeah.
Letting us kind of.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just really liked, um, where Don had said what to do.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I definitely think that we need to, for the person that's just gonna read the first paragraph, there needs to be what to do, where to go. Uh, I think that's important.
I agree.
You know, you, you want to capture as much attention as fast as possible because you never know how, how many lines they're gonna get through before this thing goes in the trash can.
Right.
So.
And I think we need to shorten it so the people, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
To make it not two pages.
Yeah.
So, all right, well, we, we'll, we'll work on that in the next, uh, in the next couple of days. And I'll, I'll get a copy to you and Ron to try to, you know, see where we can go from there. That's all, that's it for me. I did want to say one last thing as we are seeing P four and P five start to increase in well, M, M, M V D nine.
Saw that.
So, um, yeah, and, uh, you know, from the standpoint of, it, it's not unexpected, but it's something that, you know, is happening, so.
And it's higher than well two, I think, right?
A lot, very, a lot higher. It's twenty point three, uh, P F O S is at twenty point three. Um, as of just recently, the last sa- sampling, a couple of days ago or last month, I guess. And the P F O S, P, uh, excuse me, yeah, P F O is at twenty point three in well nine. And in well two, it's at like ten.
Yeah.
Ten or eleven. So it's twice as high in nine. Um, and it isn't two.
I think well nine was basically non-detect that originally or something, right?
Yeah, when we started, it was nothing there, and it'd gone up to thirty. And it's dropped down from thirty to twenty in the last, um, month. But I don't, these are the samples we're taking. I don't, I think that probably because of the treatment process, Peter Pitzus has more data that he's collecting in terms of the pre and post, uh, membrane.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we've got the treated information. But yeah, I saw that in the raw water because it, it was alarming to me because I mean, it was like nothing and then it went boom, way up there.
Yeah, I mean, I can just quickly share that with you if you want to see it. Let me.
Is there any thoughts about why that's, that's happening now? I mean, it's just weird. All of a sudden it's, I mean, we're pumping it more, obviously, but.
Well, we, you know, certainly we're picking up areas that either where the P F O S is deposited in the soils and we're picking up more, uh, you know, the areas reached out and we're grabbing it. Uh, I don't think it's, you know, it, it's, it's capturing it, the, the, what was going to M V D is being captured by M V D nine by in part, but you can see it started zero, zero here. And, uh, this is, went up to thirty point eight and then down to twenty point three. And I expect that there'll be, you know, cyclic fluctuation there, but I want to keep my eyes on this because that, that, like you, Don, I was a little surprised to see that, so.
Yeah.
I'll share that with you.
Good, I think you hit everything. I, I made notes of that I wanted to, to, um, discuss with you, so.
Great.
Any other questions? I know you have to jump on another meeting or something.
I do.
Anything else you wanted to cover?
Nope, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, so just, um, send us a reminder on that twenty fourth meeting.
Yep.
Um, and, uh.
Please to all, to everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, well, should I send it to Jill and then she'll send it to you?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, that was gonna be a teams, Jamie, or was it gonna be a zone? Probably teams.
That's a teams, teams meeting.
So you're gonna have to generate that.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, it went out. Just take a look at it. It should be on your calendar. Um, okay, twenty fourth meeting and then, uh, and then the letter. Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Great. Good to see you guys.
You too.
All right, all right.
Have a good one, Jamie. Thank you.
See ya. Thank you. Bye now. See if I, there you go.
All right, good. So, um, we will switch around now and go back to, um, Finance and Human Resources Review. Kristen? Everybody's ready for that.
Um, for the month of September, we're three months into our fiscal year, twenty five percent into the fiscal year. Uh, current year revenue, we are at one point seven million. Our expenses right now are at one point one million. Um, with three months in, again, not a lot to talk about.
Um, I had a question. It says on the very first page, uh, the financial reports, it says as of, well, it says through nine thirty twenty twenty three, but then it says as of ten eleven.
What I do is that's actually when I run the reports. I put that there so that if anything, if I receive invoices after the fact, that that's kind of the line in the sand when I run the reports to you guys.
But the numbers you're comparing are just through September thirtieth.
Yes.
All right, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have an extra weekend to have
No, we will see.
Revenue or expenses in there.
Typically vendors who give us our invoices with snail mail, we can get invoices for September right until November.
Basically, everything booked from, uh, September thirtieth. Okay. Thanks.
Um, as you know, our interest rates that were negotiated higher, um, have become even higher because of what's going on in our inflation rates and, um, not more to borrow, but if you have money, you, you get a lot more in interest. So that has actually been offsetting a lot of our, uh, the new fees that we were getting for lac rocks. So that is actually hitting us like we were in terms of some of the numbers that I were showing you before we did that. Because of this, it's actually our interest rate is offsetting the majority of those fees. So, um, in terms of expenses, um, three months in, there's a couple of things to look at in terms of, uh, our overtime. We have two projects that are after hours, like today we'll have for next week's Pharaoh, we'll have some overtime for that. Yeah. These accounts six zero six five zero, I just got that invoice today for the seven and eights G I C replacement.
Yeah.
Um, it did come in at about fifteen thousand less than the first quarter, which was due to um, maybe about extra media that.
Oh, yeah. So we. The makeup media? The makeup media, they originally said it was gonna be what's it, ten to fifteen percent?
Yeah.
They figured out it like, yeah, seven thousand pounds. Then I got a number from a bit sixty seven hundred pounds. We actually used twenty eight hundred pounds instead of the sixty seven or, or seventy two hundred pounds, but we also got four thousand pounds extra, so. And I told them right at the beginning that, uh, that's on you that if you screwed up and didn't, didn't give us back what, you know, more than what we wanted or we needed, well, and, uh, basically what I'm paying for it. Good. Great.
Uh, questions on revenue or expense?
Um.
September?
I just had one comment on, uh, what is it, line? Seven zero zero one zero point two under software.
Seven zero zero.
The, uh, one twenty waters software for lead service lines.
Yes.
Um, we don't have to get into it now, but I would, I'm not sure what the, this is, I, I have no clue what any of this is about.
I thought this was, sorry?
Exactly.
No, sorry.
It's the one twenty salt water software for lead service lines. Like. Funny, it's to meet the, the, uh, lead service line mandate from EPA. Put together a, um, like a data page or. For us.
And if you also look on the revenues by chief, count four zero five zero zero, you got a grant that's gonna offset the majority of this.
Right, okay. Well, that's good to know. But I, I was just curious like what it was. But I I was just curious, like what it was, maybe we can just bring it up as an agenda item, as some future agenda, to just. Like a.
Yeah.
Presentation to show us what it is, or, you know, a quick ten minute thing or something. I just didn't know what what was involved with it, what we're doing. It would help to be familiar with what's going on with it.
That's part of the. What's it called, um? Level of Service Project, right?
It is not.
It is not, it's.
No.
N C A requirement, it's um.
What are you gonna do?
Water Act requirement, led to the service inventory that we need to comply by. October.
Of next year.
Next year.
We're in New York, two, three years.
But it's just to assess all of night service lines in your district.
To basically get an inventory of.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, well, that's helpful. I didn't know what really was about.
Any other questions?
Uh, have we ever looked at solar?
I'm sorry?
Have we ever looked at solar electricity?
That I've been here, no.
So.
That'd be a bad idea. I mean, I know we got a lot going on, but uh, it's a pretty big line item.
Yes, it is, electricity.
Hmm. Something I've been thinking about myself, my, my bill's only about five thousand, so. But um. Yeah.
The perfect self basic test, so.
There you go.
Do you know our rates are up here?
We we are at a significantly reduced uh based on our broker, our electric broker for supply is. I believe seven, seven cents, seven point four five cents.
That's a good one, wow.
And that expires at the end of twenty twenty five, our fiscal year twenty twenty five. We did it three year, so. Um, actually, twenty twenty four. So I've been working, I get a call, our broker just get us for the next bunch coming up. For another three years.
I'm gonna have good news for you. It's a good point.
It was still significant enough for. Um, the average, and I know that resource is actually coming down in the rate, um, the the next six months, I think.
Uh, that'll be nice.
Um, that was, yeah, past, I believe, two months ago, they requested to actually reduce their rates.
So I guess, are you wondering, like, is there's an entity that comes in and would evaluate our system and?
I know there's brokers out there. All you'd have to do is Google it and they'll get email for the next ten years about it.
Exactly.
Um, so yes, they'll come in, you tell them what you have for buildings and land. And I think they'll give you a plan and say, you know, this is.
It could be.
Yeah, it could be on the ground, too. Um, and I haven't gone through the whole process, but that's my ten thousand foot knowledge of it. Um, and I think they get paid in a couple of different ways. You pay them a lease for the equipment. Or you buy it a front or what have you, and um, I think they prefer the lease, because they want to make the money over time. Um, but that's the general idea is.
Yeah.
They give you the stuff, you pay them, they make money, and you save money. Over five, ten years, whatever it is.
The way that it would work is whatever you use, and whatever you produce, so if you. Use the same, you get a zero dollar bill. If you use more, you get the the your bill would be the difference. And if you use less, you're actually contributing that back into the system.
Oh, I'm getting paid for it.
And getting paid for it.
Wow.
We have to watch a little bit the different models, because my understanding is some of those models are not working out so great for the people that enters it, entered it, and I'm not gonna say each one. So we have to understand what we're doing, but I think a big part of it is also how long are you gonna be owner of the property that you installed it on, right? And aside from maybe this building here, right? Although the idea of headquarters uh might not be, our new headquarters might not be uh so attractive right now, but uh, you know, the planes. We're probably gonna have for decades to come, right? So I wouldn't be so worried about that, but uh. Hmm, maybe we have to understand what we're doing. I do like the idea, uh, for sure. But we have to understand what we're doing with the different models, because some people have got to gotten.
And there are a lot of solar scheme companies out there.
Yeah, there are.
So.
Oh, yeah.
Finding reputable ones.
Now, I don't know what what the answer's position is, but I do know in Massachusetts, I was on a committee, and this issue came up about putting solar panels. In the sanitary protective radius around the wells, because that's where everybody.
Yeah.
That's where all the water suppliers own the land.
Right.
Around the well, so, you know, they were thinking about going in there, clear cutting the woods, putting solar panels right next to the well. And there was some concern there, because some solar panels are actually coated PFAS, so the snow slides off.
All right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a lot to.
We gotta be careful. So I think at the time, as far as I know, is I think the Mass D E P did not allow that, but I don't know if the yes ever. Was asked or took a position on that. It was only Massachusetts that I I was aware of, so.
I think just. Well, we got a couple of tanks in town. There's there's a number of different options.
And we all land outside of our uh. You know, at worst cases, I don't know how much PFAS would be produced there in the ground that would get into the wells, but. It's kind of foolish to say we're already treating PFAS, so wouldn't want to add to the load, but again, I don't know. It's it's a good question.
Yeah.
You know, um, I don't know, I mean.
I can do some homework.
That's something you want to look into.
At least for the plants.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For here. Right.
Looking at the contracts or the proposals or anything like that, I'm usually pretty good with that kind of thing, so I can help you out. I don't, I don't mind.
Good.
Doing it.
It'd be interesting to see if any other water districts have. Done solar yet.
I think Con- somewhere I got Conway Village District in my mind.
Yeah, I'd be I'd be interested to see if anybody's gone before us and done it successfully or unsuccessfully.
Get on the train, right? Um, should we maybe make that an action item, Amanda's is um in- investigation of solar power options?
Yeah, and that's for Kristen.
Yeah, just leave it general like that. Um, as far as a report date, maybe what, a couple few months out, at least. I don't want to overload you with other stuff. So um, it, you know, but, yeah, if if you think you can um.
I've been doing it for myself, so it's a matter.
All right, good.
Homework for both.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go. Yeah, so maybe, maybe two or three months out, whatever you. At least a preliminary uh report on anything you might have found. All right.
January.
Yeah, sure. Why don't we do that?
Um, after revenues expense, our fund balances, I did actually get my audit day. Um, final general entry from the auditors this afternoon. You're not in these numbers. But next month, you should have, I will give you the final score F point twenty three. And F point twenty four will have the adjusted numbers going forward. Where we sit right now is um our unrestricted, is at twenty three million. Our net income, three months in, is at um six hundred and forty three thousand. Um, that should not change significantly based on the O P A P general entry that I perceived. So, as I said, that was a number that kind of fluctuated all over the place based on um. Um, N F N R S and the adjustments that they require, so. This kind of will, although it doesn't have the final numbers in it, these numbers are probably going to stay the same. Um, or similar to. Um. In terms of our capital, the next reserve. You had asked last month about doing a percent of unassigned. I've actually, what? I've revamped this even more for next month. Um, but the. Suggestions for the warrant articles of eight hundred thousand back into equipment. Um, the ninety nine is a fixed from the previous year and the two hundred thousand for what a purchase. All of that adds up to about six percent of our unassigned, which was at. Um, eighteen percent, and so I do the unassigned of the previous year, not our ongoing. So our unassigned at the time of this report was about eighteen million, so it works out to be about six percent. Taking out of unassigned to put back into our trust funds based on um. Purchase or deduction we're going for the next year or so. I also added a few more deduction based on Ron and. Um, Underwoods C I P going over for the next ten years, so I only added through twenty twenty five. So that, as basically as years drop off, I'll keep adding that with this stuff from the C I P on that, so that. That report and this report, you can see kind of where money's coming from.
And you're you're sharing this also with Lyndon as the treasurer, that kind of thinking, or?
Not Lynn, but her husband, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Trustee.
Trustee, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Yeah, he had, because they didn't have an October meeting, they're only having a November.
Right.
He wanted, he sent out emails to the town and us and everybody saying. What's everyone looking to take out? What's everyone, everyone looking to put in? So I hit it and him, I put in numbers for the estimate. But most likely, and then our more recent takeouts, but without, I don't know exact dates, but this is what we're like gonna take out.
Good.
Questions on any of that?
Good, if you guys. I had a question on the next report, profit and loss previous year comparison.
Yeah.
Is the um. I thought this was a direct comparison of the first. Three months of this.
This year.
Year for the last fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
So, like the first line item there, four, four zero one zero zero. This fiscal year is five hundred and eighty six thousand in revenue. Water sales. And it's compared against three point one million? Is that something off there?
Yeah, we did something's out there.
All right, so I think you're grabbing the whole year of.
Sure looks like.
Okay, because I was like, wait a minute. These numbers are supposed to.
Three months, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's probably fifteen months, and it's July twenty two to September twenty three is, all right. So I I just wanted to make sure.
Oh.
I was not looking at this wrong. Um, but that's fine. I mean, when we, when we increase rates anyways, you wouldn't expect things to line up exactly with the previous.
Correct.
Comparison anyway.
Definitely not that much.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we weren't actually eighty one percent down in our our revenues comparatively, that's all. All right, that's good. That was the only question I had left. Yeah, your month by month are are good there. All right, so I don't know, um, no one else has any question? Anything else you want to uh? Want to? Um, where are we here?
We should return.
Yeah. So you've got a uh summary of action items there? You want to cover any of that?
Um, what, review action items for the rest of them, I don't, I'm being just kind of mind. What put that?
Yeah, yeah, so while you're here, if you wanted to.
Well, I think I'm here for the.
Are you? Oh, you are, okay, uh, uh, whatever, if you want to do it now or just with the rest of the action items, it's fine.
Sure.
I didn't know.
Um, lockbox, and then I kind of threw on also portal update along with that. Um, so primarily the portal update, our customers signed up for the portal, we've increased over last month to um point one percent. Uh, E bill only, we've increased by point six percent. And our auto pay by one point five percent, and as I mentioned last year, uh month. Seeing these numbers when we had talked to, um. Continental Utility, they said it would usually take two years. Two to three, even up to five years to get numbers like this, and we're about a year and a half into it. So, you can see we are really pushing people going to the portal.
I would still suggest that we put something on one of the next invoices that just outlines this one more time, that there is a. Fee, you know, uh feeless way to pay.
Yeah.
Bill, because I spent again.
I saw your whole.
I know.
Yes.
Somebody on my right is probably kicking me in the shin here again, but uh.
And that's first, like, when they call, it's.
They're charging a fee?
First thing they said, if you.
What's the fee?
Your portal, you can pay for your bill.
Checking.
If you sign up with automatic A C H, then there's no fees.
Yeah, they'll pull it out of your account free.
And I know some people don't want to link their account.
That's not gonna make me happy as a customer at all.
Right.
I am not confident in the portal's security. There's been data breaches all over the place, so don't charge me a fee.
Please.
Have me write you a check. That is my, that's my stance on it.
Your bank also.
I do it the other way, is I pay through my bank.
Yeah, but it's still.
So, it's not, because we have the electronic thing that goes out and collects the bank's money.
You have something called bank lim- uh, elimination, so what that actually does is if I'm D C U member and I use their bill pay. I say I want to pay my water bill using B, uh, bill pay, they cut a check. But because it's bank to bank, our bank inception goes out and says, where, what are all these bank to bank things? It goes and grabs all that information, and then we get a lump sum A C H payment.
Right.
So we don't actually get a check from you anymore.
Well, that's good.
Get it done automatically.
But you're just charging the people physically write a check.
No, well, the only fee is if you use a credit card, right?
Correct.
The only fee is if you pay with a credit card.
If you do a one-time payment using your checking or savings, if you set it up to be automatic with your checking or savings, there's no fee. Credit cards is always a fee, and that's ultimately.
I'm not a problem with that.
Control, because these are charges of.
Because they charge, yeah.
Well, and and the Hampshire R say that we cannot cover the.
Right.
When we started this, I had to, I was still writing paper checks, so I went through the whole process. And I was, hmm, I really like hooking into my bank account. I did it, just to see what it, you know, what happened or whatever. But then ultimately, that's how I decided to just pay it through my bank, because it goes like, Kristen was like, nope, it'll just go get it, so it's not a real check, it's not a pain in the butt.
And there's no fee with that, and I'd say I can't imagine there's any bank that doesn't have a bill paid out.
Yeah, and it recognized M V D and everything for my credit union and, um, then you get a.
I got no beef with that, I just.
Cute email back from M V D saying thank you for paying. So you know it went through.
Yeah, I noticed the email too, and it says, hey, we got this portal, and I'm like, no, I want the portal, no.
So there are choices that are, don't have a fee.
That's fair. So out of these, uh, E bill only?
Yes.
Does that have a fee?
No.
And then the auto pay doesn't have a fee either?
Auto pay does not have, so the E bill means that you're getting your statement via text or email.
All right.
Instead of a paper, so we're cutting down on.
Oh, yeah, so, okay.
So I don't think I did that.
Um.
So you really want to do like both, right? E bill and auto pay?
That's our goal, yeah, for everybody on both of us.
Oh.
So that we no longer have to print bills.
Right.
And we no longer have to.
Accept paper checks, yeah.
Annual process.
Can you send the E bill without the portal?
You send.
For.
E.
I think Amy can do that within just our system outside of the portal. So.
That would be something to to put forth to people, because I don't know how to sign up for that, and I would. Um, I might be the one, but maybe.
Yeah, I can see what you're saying, like have somebody else just click the button that says send an E bill. And then you just get the email, but you didn't have to log in and create something.
Our system does send out E bills just through our system that is not attached to the portal.
Yeah, if it goes, like in my bank, it goes straight to the bank. The bank gets the E bills, sets up the auto pay and sends it. That's how I pay Comcast, that's how I pay EverSource, all that stuff. I don't even have to do anything, it just happens. I don't even have to do anything, it just happens. So if I go on, I don't know how they get on my bank's. Radar to say, hey, we'll accept this.
Wouldn't be able to do that, we could send it to your email.
Yeah.
But you wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to send it to your bank.
Okay, you'd have to use auto pay for that.
Yeah. At least it would save some paper.
Set us up as a bill pay.
Is all this on our website for people to go and?
It's wordy, but.
Yeah.
It's which is when we try to come in with the bullets on invoices, cards, anything that goes out, we're like. My portal, my M V D.
And I I was just talking to my wife about this a month ago before we went away traveling and we never had a chance to look at it, but. You know, I think I wanna get away from writing the monthly checks too. This is probably the way, so.
Yeah, so two thousand.
Um, probably ninety ninety.
I just stopped paying bills and checks this summer. I was like, you know what, I'm just gonna go through, I'm just gonna do the. And I did them one at a time so I could make sure, like, okay, that one didn't mess up this month and then went to the next bill, that's how I did it.
One left, which was my tutor. Like, do you take Venmo?
Yeah.
You can't go Venmo.
But we've got other stuff, it's just. All right, good, well, that's good to hear.
Website is up with our current information. Um upgrades on financials, I'm still waiting on a few more quotes. As I had mentioned. Um, last time. Municipal resources is where I'm leaning. They're still so busy, they can't even get me a quote. Wow, but from the other people that's spoken to. They are significantly less than everyone else out there. Because again, this is kind of a side project that they've done. Um, to keep people in compliance with. What New Hampshire D R A wants, so.
So it's like specific more to the Hampshire, and it says here it's a local New Hampshire company.
What was the name of that company again?
It is municipal technologies um systems, it's software. Municipal Resources Inc. is who's creating it. And M V D's actually used municipal resources for some contracting here and there.
Like right after the last page of financials.
I'm fine with them being super busy and like having to wait to get quotes and stuff. But have you heard good things about like, once you have the software and you need help?
If you need, well.
You know what I'm saying? If you have an issue and you call them, do you have to wait like three weeks for them to help you?
Two weeks ago. I spoke to one of their um. Programmers. Cause they're that small. And. Cause we were trying to figure out what to do about um. Work order management, if by chance we were ever to give up on U O S. And one of the things. They had said. Excuse me. Was that they're willing to talk to. And work with elements. And I'm getting.
Great timing, huh? Yeah, no, this is good to see, I'd like to know from any of the customers how. It's being received as well, right?
Yeah.
I get my. Here it goes. I had spoken to him. And he had said that. Because they're only gonna concentrate on the financial side. Although they have a utility billing. They weren't gonna go into. Um, work order management or anything like that. But they were completely open to. With their utility billing to work with elements or narcotics. Which is what U O S now. Goes to elements for work order management. So. They know that because they're kind of. Drawing a line in the sand. Their programmers. Are willing to discuss working to get. Us as a customer, basically. But I know that. As I've been doing all of this. I've been trying to find software that one has. Multiple modules. That. Because right now we have. Roughly six softwares that we're trying to talk to each other. And although financials is what we need right now. That maybe eventually we could then say, well, what is it for this? What is it for this? Is it for this? Five, ten years on the road. We could all be on the same software.
Right.
Do we know what the other districts and other companies out there are using? And what the feedback is on those?
Larger ones. A lot of using Tyler. Which is high end. Super expensive. And then other places that are smaller are kind of in our scenario where they're using like six different, like. One for financial, one for work order management, one for this, one for that. And then when something doesn't work, they get the same as we do, well, that's elements problems, no, that's this problem, there's that problem. So trying to. And I said. Ultimately, the goal is. Upgrade financials. But in my book, it's I'd rather kind of future lookout to say, well, if I'm. I like this for financials. What will it work for anyone else down the line? And because they're module based. You're not buying the whole thing, you can buy financials and then, okay, well, now now we wanna do our apparel. All right, let's really cut through what I knew most. Let's do this. It we can do it over over time versus. And in that respects. I thought being on the same software. We can set up accounts for you guys where, you know. You only for financials. He can have an approval process that's actually in the system instead of on paper. Like.
Yeah.
A lot more things. In terms of auditing also. A lot more people can have their hands in the soup, but it's supervised. To the point that there's approval processes um. We have paper purchase orders now. In a locked cabinet, if I'm out. You know, so. Brian wants a purchase order to purchase something for the distribution. He can just type in, it goes to him, it's approved, by the time it gets to my desk, okay, everything's done. So things like that. Instead of having it be on on a spreadsheet and the paper purchase order, and then I gotta scan it to him to get to Fender, it's like.
Wow, yeah. It's good to hear.
We started this whole thing, it's guess I'd like to get rid of quick books. But looking at everything else in a bigger picture too.
I wouldn't look so much at the cost initially, I would look at features first because your savings may pay back anyway. The bigger issue is acceptance in the team, right? You're gonna have to have people that are not right now very computer driven to all of a sudden. Do digital requisitions and so on with all kinds of master data fields that need to be satisfied that are mandatory and and you know and then. And you might find some challenges there, especially in a small organization.
Of course, it's, no one likes change. Ever, so I I.
Convenience maybe.
But I think in the end. Highlighting the convenience of things. Ultimately, like this took us an hour last time, now it takes us ten minutes. Yeah, there's one more thing you gotta push, but. In the end, it works out. I think in terms of when we went to our apparel company and just some of the things. Not having to print out paychecks each week, like there's quarterly, all you have to do like, and I would get the same people. And like literally, here's it. Save the bookmark and then now they just go, there's your paycheck, there's your paycheck, there's your, but they're like, oh, that's simple, so.
I'll be honest, I mean. We've been speaking about this for a while, um it might be time for us to. I mean, if this is really a project, then we really need to. Formalize a little bit, like have a criteria catalog, for example. You know, and and agree on that before we even go out and and ask for poses from these vendors. Because it starts with things like where i- is it a cloud-based system? If so, where's the data? Is it in the U S? Right, is it, is it outside of the U S? If it's outside of the U S, is it a country that we agree with? Right, to to.
All of them, but for municipal resources, they actually use Amazon's servers.
Which doesn't mean a thing, they could be still in. Countries. It could be another countries without naming one, so I mean, if you're if we're really serious about that, we probably need to take a step back actually and have a criteria catalog and really. Make an assessment, what are we looking for? And what are we measuring? Because it's one thing of with you being on the phone with five different vendors five times. We're still not gonna have something formal to make a decision on, right, to base a decision on.
Other than a quote, but you wouldn't know.
Right. We wouldn't know this guy fulfills that criteria, this guy does not, this guy maybe, this guy only with modifications, this guy only with a third-party module. So if we wanna do this for real, which it sounds like you guys are actively doing it. Then I would suggest that we first develop a criteria catalog and and present it to the board, so we have at least a feeling that we're doing this. Because this this can be easily a million bucks expense, right? I mean, and by by the time everybody has been trained and developments, you know, process have been changed. Don't forget the hidden cost of consulting and travel expenses, training, you know, setting up new processes, testing them out, there's a lot of hidden costs. So we were talking about some real money and I'm not against it by any means, right? But I I think we have to make sure we have a good criteria bay or, you know, a decision basis and not a couple of phone calls, no offense.
No.
I'm I'm sure you you're gonna do your diligence there, but I think to make that comparable and not do, you know. Kind of decision here. I think we have to have some.
Is there something that you guys have? Come up with before?
In manufacturing, yeah, but not in municipal environment. But you guys know what you're looking for, you know.
Sorry about the accounting system?
Yeah, in general, um the the work order system, you know, the tracking of complaints, maybe and a a customer, you know. Uh, maybe there's a customer portal, right, potentially that is integrated in it and not some third party. Like it's not that I wanna throw that out the window already by any means, right, but we have to understand that all, you know, maybe the new tool can. Maybe the new tool doesn't work with our current portal, right, so we have to have these criterias defined as individual requirements. Right, and then we have to say, yeah, the system is, you know, the system is not gonna work for us, period, because it doesn't work with our portal. And we don't wanna reinvent the wheel with the portal, or yes, we accept that. And we throw out the portal because the new system has something nicer that is even more fully integrated, like we have to understand that. There's so many decisions that and ramifications that come from that, and there has to be more than.
Yes.
Over the thumb.
I have kind of a list of. My. Wish items and then a list of, as I said, for the future, he needs wish like wish items. And seeing if we can find anything that fits the bubble. And she's convinced. We can't and that the two of us should just go write our own software, so.
Yeah, that's that's a no-go. Cause then you leave and then we have a problem. Has to be commercial.
But all right, then let me, I guess, add to another. Criteria list.
Yeah, maybe an actual item too.
Criteria catalog.
Yeah, that's what you do for.
Yeah.
Software evaluations, because otherwise you have nothing to base your decision on.
Yeah, you can just update eighty-five with it, it's already.
Is it there?
Yes, eighty-five is already an action item.
Yes.
So it's kind of. Something, the next part of that action item kind of thing.
Okay.
So just add to eighty-five?
Yep, basically just say, uh, you know, um. Uh, proposed criteria catalog for, you know. Billing and, you know, operational software system, whatever. You guys call it.
And then. Moving on, it's my handbook, um. I have gotten. Revisions from Jill, the two of us just need to sit down and go over. Um, so I'm hoping to actually have that in your packet next month. For you guys to review or first read of the whole handbook redesigned.
Gonna give it to me after you guys forward or yes?
Yes. Um, which I think I put one on your chair. But then you went on vacation. So it's probably so. I think I put both you and Jill one. Unfortunately, because of how many revisions, I'm probably gonna have new version, old version. Cause it was hard when I started like keeping track of the edits, it it just got so messy and crazy that. You guys wouldn't have. So we'll probably have, I'm assuming, two, three, four reads of that, so that we we make sure we get through all of pages.
Maybe take it section by section or something.
And we can do that.
Yeah, or if you guys have it ready, like a week or. Two weeks before the meeting or something, have her throw it up in the portal so we can.
Right.
Not reading the playbook at a weekend. I go on to, but I don't want to.
And then level of service. We are in the midst of importing. Our horizontal and vertical assets into elements. Uh, once those are imported, we are going to start working on specific tasks. And. Um. Preventative maintenance items that's. For all of the treatment plants. Um, and. We do it now for our distribution assets, but this is not for all of the treatment stuff. Uh, we have right now, Dan is kind of doing stuff, we're doing preventative maintenance. But it's not being my um recorded right now because we're in the midst of playing catch-up on. Creating all these assets in the system so that he can actually new work orders going forward on specific. Pumps within the treatment plan. Um, the last I heard that are imported, Ryan was just reviewing them. To make sure it all is there and in there correctly. And then they're actually going to work with narcotics to come up with the task so that we are ourselves are not creating every single task they think. They're actually gonna help us create a flow of what. Um, a baseline of tasks that we should have and they'll create them and and design that for us. Um. And then we'll be off and running on all of our assets um within elements. And we should be able to start. Seeing reports to how long our pumps lasting, how long their. Certain things lasting within it, are they lasting what we were told and so forth, so that's. Down the line, that will be some of the reporting that we can get you guys.
Yeah, I I like the planning that's going on with everything, you know, it's it's you're looking ahead and I think it's gonna help.
Future looking at.
Yeah, yeah, I like that. Great. All right, any other questions on anything? All right, that's great, I appreciate it, we can move on, um. So number two, I think we already kind of tackled that with Jamie, the uh the road thought water quality letter, he's gonna take a crack at. Wordsmith and that, get that back out to you and me, run.
Yep.
Uh, so everybody else is good with that. We'll move on, um. What's this? Number three, review the minutes from September eighteenth. Uh, the regular meeting in the non-public session. Let's do the uh non-public meeting minutes, September eighteenth. That's pretty generic as far as the uh minutes there, so.
A non-public um moon, actually. Does anybody have minutes on uh changes on the? Does anybody have minutes on uh, changes on the regular ones too?
I did not.
Don't think I do either.
Does it bother anybody if I move to approve both September eighteen minutes?
Um, I'd like to do them separate just cuz I'm not gonna do them uh, non-public cuz I wasn't here for that and I didn't see the. I didn't see any, it wasn't recorded.
What are we doing for not public? There's nothing here.
No, so.
Minutes are sealed and they're not here.
Well, they are. The minutes are.
They're in the packet at least. I'm a little surprised too because I thought we voted to seal them.
Thought you did. Oh, you voted to seal them in the public session.
Right, yeah, which means.
In other words, we've never seen the minutes for the non-public meeting. We're voting on saying at the meeting open and close and that's.
Yeah, and that's pretty much what it is. I've had the same discussion two months ago. Apparently that's the process.
Alright, I agree that the meeting open and closed on September eighteenth.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes from September eighteenth twenty twenty-three.
Okay, motion by Wolf. Second by John to approve the non-public meeting minutes of September eighteenth that presented here without modifications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that's three in favor. I'm gonna abstain, I wasn't there. So that's three zero one. With me, uh, don't prevent your abstaining. Uh, and then moving on to the regular uh, meeting minutes of September eighteen.
I move to approve the meetings, meeting minutes of September eighteen, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Second. Motion by John second, I mean, motion by Wolf, second by John, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 You were in the one you.
I wasn't at that one, but I watched the uh. Watched the YouTube, so I feel that that. Give me the.
Sure, sure.
So that's four zero zero on the regular minutes for September eighteen. That's all of the minutes. So then we're on to number four, action items. I know we've covered a bunch of those already, which is good. Uh, first couple we see on here, numbers twenty uh, two and twenty-three are due for November. So I don't think there's much to really talk about there. Uh, Nvidia open house at treatment plant nine thirty. So that already occurred. That went very well, um. I was there, you showed up Aaron as well, I know Wolfie couldn't make it unfortunately. A pretty good turnout, I'd say there was about, I don't know. Thirty people?
I would say thirty, thirty-five. Are we gonna see any pictures of that or post something on the website or?
I don't know if we took, we took any.
You'll post pictures, I know, yeah.
She did take pictures.
Yeah, it would be nice to show that, share that a little bit. And if we had any like displays or something like that, maybe we can attach those. To a page.
Uh, we did have stuff posted in the hall.
Yeah, the construction pictures from, it was a different. Yes.
He did take some pictures though, I I think.
Be nice to put something on the website or on the Facebook page, at least on the Facebook page or something like that, maybe not on the website.
Okay. Um, so maybe when we have, since we have this, um. Already, number forty. Wanted to just make a note on number forty to um, post pictures. Of the open house on the Facebook page. Okay, so we'll leave number forty there and then once those are posted, we'll probably delete it at the next meeting or something.
Very good.
Um, ongoing salt mitigation committee meetings, um. What do we, uh, was the doodle poll that we're thinking of sending out? Well, yeah, I don't think though, right?
I don't think that's going on yet. I was confused with the. We did send a doodle poll out for kickoff meeting. And that's twenty-fourth, I was thinking it was the.
Oh, okay. I don't, I don't think I got that. That just go to. But I think Jamie said if any of the commissioners wanted to go. Alright. Yeah, send just send me a link, I already got, I I got it on my calendar. Uh, so as far as this mitigation committee meeting, we'll uh, plan on doing that. In the future or something?
Yeah, I think we need to have it sooner than later as well, so.
Yeah. Why don't we change number forty-three, the last column to uh, November, so we can revisit that? I don't know when, set the meeting for, but that's what the doodle poll is for, to see who's available when, whatever.
Okay.
Okay, number fifty-eight, that is due in November, so um, we can pass on that one. Uh, would have got number fifty-nine. Uh, proactive measures to track and correlate customer wild water quality complaints, coloration, sediment, chlorine. Um. Says a note here, staff working on implementing within new software, is that what Brian's working on? You'd mentioned or what is that?
The form that people get sent out online.
Oh, yeah.
Um. And that's the last month to this month, you know, not a lot of people fill it out, so we don't have a lot of data to.
Is it something that is on our website now or something or?
Believe so. So that they fill out a form and it actually. Tracks to. I believe elements that Brian can then check out. Thoughts to see what's going on. Um. Sounds.
In there and I know it's something.
Yes. We do this every time.
Yeah.
It's a, it's an automated form. That they can fill out. But once they fill out, there's certain data that then translates to Brian being able to, is this a kinda informational or should I check it out? But it will put dots on the map for him, so that also he could see if there's, um. Concentration, like.
Yeah.
But again. A lot of people aren't filling it out or that are, you know, of.
Well.
Two months, maybe six people fill it out, there's not a lot to tell you guys.
Yeah.
It's great, working great, or.
I don't think anybody's aware that it exists.
So.
Not.
Did we also put some other bills saying?
I think we did.
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah.
Maybe a um, a push notification email thing?
That is wrong.
Would help.
Let me ask Jamie how, how, how we've let people know that it's there.
Okay. I don't think we need to amend the action item, but we'll probably keep it here, so um. Yeah, uh, just change number fifty-nine Amanda from October to November. Good with that, okay? Um, alright, so number sixty-seven, DOT about moving the sign closer, where are we staying with that? Did something get?
So again, I actually met with uh, nothing, nothing installed yet, but did meet with uh, DOT. Uh. Last Wednesday, um. Went around to three different locations up on, up on industrial. Um, continental. East, eastbound lane, kind of by fidelity, and then we also went over to. One-on-one in the area of Bentley's Roast Beef.
Oh, yeah.
It's a sign there, um, there will be a sign that they're fine with all the locations.
They were.
Uh, I marked them out, I marked them, I talked to Lori. Make sure she was all set, um. So basically, I'm just gonna get him, get him dig saved and uh. Well.
So now these, those are just gonna be our act for protection signs, right?
He did offer as well for over up here to move those signs.
Back on the same post like, yeah.
I'm not supposed to same post, but he'll set them. Either, you know, right after our sign, it'll say solid reduction area or type of things.
Okay. So that'll take care of the one on industrial drive that's really close to the intersection, we switch that back.
Yep.
And I think there's one. Behind or past um, camp sergeant going towards.
Yeah, he was gonna leave.
Square or heading the other way, actually.
Yep, I swear there was one in between and I think it's. There, he said they didn't move them. But I think there's one that's missing, but.
Alright. Alright, but you go.
I thought there was one okay, but that'll be another one. I can't seem to find it, so.
Yeah, I haven't looked recently. Alright, as long as you're uh, good with with. That unfolding, that's.
Have like six more signs we, we missed. The machine broke, so there was two on route three, um. Front of Pine and Burgs in Shaw's, um, the North Shaw's.
Okay.
Those signs in and actually for about one on wood here that we've been up.
Good.
So we'll get, we'll get those. Take care of what we do the other, the other three.
Good, sounds good. Alright, so what number? That was number sixty-seven, uh, sixty-eight. Uh, grant funding for artificial recharge Mitchell Woods. Engineering. So. I don't know if you found any. Or look for any grant money on that, but um. This just makes, makes me ask the question about where we stand on those, cuz. Underwood was doing uh, a cost feasibility for. Expanding our treatment plants to add like resin treatment.
Yeah.
And they were also doing a partial design on the artificial recharge. I thought the scope of work had them. Completing that. Like a few months ago. So I don't, I just don't know where we are on those.
I'm not a hundred percent either, I'll have to look at that when that was.
Yeah, I guess maybe I'm asking if you could follow up with that, with them on that. Um.
Well, I think in general, the the engineering orders for Underwood, maybe get an update on all of them because. We haven't really heard a lot other than. You know, two and nine or three and nine, well, yeah, two and nine. We haven't heard really a whole lot of updates recently. On any of them.
Yeah, they were just really getting into the AR and the towards end of it.
And I know the uh. The whole thing about the resin polishing moved into, uh, we started looking at. That morphed into like using our column tests. To maybe look started, uh, doing some of our own testing and all that.
Did you talk to? Get two purchase orders to move ahead with the columns at seven and eight and. Well, two and and nine.
And those are like, what, fifteen grand or something?
No, there were, uh. Thirty-one.
Oh, are they that much?
Yeah, that, um. It's insane is what we had, I might, I think I had it reversed, I thought it was twenty-three, but it was. Thirty-one.
Thirty-one for all three.
For each of them?
For each, yes.
Free, okay, yeah.
Do we think we need those at all of our treatment plants? I mean, I.
Well, he did.
Another one.
I've already kind of, he's.
Yeah.
Moving ahead with it, so I am. I believe he's already ordered parts.
Alright. That was all the budget and everything?
Um, it's gonna, it's. Coming out of the, 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 uh. The law. We still have, still have money left.
Oh, okay.
We had said that we wanted to do it at each well because each well has a little bit of different.
Yeah, yeah, we.
Of contaminants and minerals and everything.
I mean, I would expect we're gonna find if one resin works good at one well, it's probably gonna work. Better, just, you know, the best that the other ones too, but.
It's anything like. It's acted different at every.
Yeah, is it?
Yeah, well, we've got different things and.
Just gonna say with our luck, I wouldn't bet on any of them.
We got lucky.
We hit a frickin' bridge.
We got lucky finding water at well nine, you know, after the treatment plant was built, so.
Yeah.
Don't wanna press our luck too much. Alright, so uh, what number was that now? That was number sixty-eight. Um, so as far as the grant funding, I think that was something we just kinda wanted to revisit periodically, so.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, nothing's come out that I've seen. Can apply for, I mean.
Right. I'll, let's leave it on here cuz it's always good to kinda.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, keep us thinking, you know, talking to um, Jamie as well as maybe um. You know, DES comes up with some money, you know. Keep it, keep Jamie plugged in and then if he's talking to people at at DES and all of a sudden it rings a bell and someone says. Oh, some grant money available for this or that. The more we know that we keep this hot on the table and everybody's forefront, then it it's easier for someone to say. Oh, I think M V D was looking for a grant for this, hey, this might fall into that, that basket, you know?
One thing quick that I realized, since we changed that last column. To indicate when the next report is to be given for each line item.
Yeah.
As we go through, we need to tell Amanda when we want to revisit every single one next, so she can update that column.
Yeah.
Which I think we haven't done right now, right? So for example, six, sixty, sixty-eight, right?
Wasn't done, but everybody else, every other one has been done so far.
It has been?
Yeah, we, we were, yeah.
But I missed that.
Alright, so.
Evan, if you don't mind assigning a new date to that, I can throw that on too.
Yeah, uh, what do you think? November, December run for sixty-seven?
Yeah.
December would be better?
Yeah, I think so.
For moving the sign.
Next couple. Will should all be in by then.
Okay.
Seventy, yeah, DOT, yeah.
Let's do December for sixty-seven. Um, same thing for um, sixty-eight, I think.
Okay.
And we can always just keep extending that if we don't have any other information.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have sixty-seven done by. November.
Yeah. Alright, we'll put, make, make sixty-seven November then, if you can do that, Amanda.
Okay.
Sixty, sixty-eight, we'll stick with uh, December. Seventy-six, uh, that was gonna be November, I will, um. I'll, I'll bring something. To the, to the meeting next month on that one. Uh, about irrigation, irrigation ban trigger levels. It's nothing, it's nothing spectacular, it's just kinda falling in line more with what, what we've actually been doing is. Like, the first, the first level is. No watering, um, we still got the odd uneven, but we're only able to water from. Um, what is it? Five, five to eight. PM and five to eight AM.
Yeah.
Um. And then.
Was I supposed to send you the policy on that? What we have now?
I had that, what we have now, yeah, I pulled that out of the bylaws or wherever it is, um. It's just so convoluted, like no one would follow it. It's, it matches the state's thing.
That's what I was just gonna say, it kinda matches what the state.
But it's like, if it's this level, then it's only on Tuesday, Thursday. And if it's the next level, then it's on Saturday, but then half the people can do it on. It, I mean, you need something you can program an irrigation clock?
Yeah.
Cuz there's no way anyone's ever gonna do that and for us to police it would be. Insane, people go out of their mind. So I just think we need to follow something that's a little more, I'll bring it, I'll bring it to the next meeting.
I didn't, I didn't know if you needed it.
No, I, I printed out, that's what kinda made me look at it and say, this, this is kinda ridiculous, this is not what would happen. Uh, but we really, it would be good if we could have it implemented, where is that in the bylaws?
I would say it was a policy.
Trying to remember where I got it, but if, if we're updating something else, which I don't think we are, but.
The bylaw is the uneven.
Yeah.
And I wanna say it was a policy, uh.
Alright, I'll, I'll look wherever it was written, I'll just make sure that. Where, if, if the overall document's getting updated, that we update that part of it. Okay, number seventy-nine, uh, update a waterline extension status.
Uh, change on that, um.
We have the grants are approved, right?
The next, kinda the next thing we're gonna work on is. We need, we're gonna get some costs together, we, it's, um. Went to a geo survey, uh, really need some ledge probes and stuff like that, just to.
Who you working with?
Uh, I'm, uh, Terry, uh. Under what I can't think of his last name off the top of my head.
It is Underwood?
It is Underwood, yeah.
So is there a, a, a service request, engineering service request on any of this?
Yeah, and update that, that engineer request and that's what we're gonna need to look at as well, so there. Then it's all being put together. And I actually know, I've said that. I'm trying to have it for me this, early this week.
Okay.
Today, but.
Alright, cuz I, yeah, I definitely think we wanna start hitting the ground on that cuz we have everything in place as far as funding now.
Well, it's still, uh, uh. Out to bid this, this winter, um, spring start date, so.
That'd be great. Alright, good, thanks for that. Um. What are we doing now, eighty-two? Uh Wells four or five, clarify whether individual well water can be run to the test columns or only mixed.
They're mixed right now.
Okay. Which I think that's kinda how we use the water anyways, right?
We do, but we can't, but it obviously one well is down, it's not blended anymore.
Yeah, right. But I think if we did any column tests at Wells four and five, we'd wanna use blended water for both wells, cuz that's kind of the. Long range plan to use both wells. So that, I think we just keep that the way it is.
We can close them.
So that being said, we can close that one out, right? Uh so I guess we can close out number eighty-two, Amanda, if you're good with that. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Alright, uh number eighty-three, that was gonna be reviewed in December, January, so we could push those off. Eighty-five, eighty-six due in November. Is that still November, um Kristen, I think you had an update earlier on us, is that good? Okay. Uh salt reduction letter number eighty-seven to be sent out in October, that. Looking like, we might still, yeah, so let's. Let's um, let's just change the date of that in the last column to November, so we can follow up on it. If hopefully we were that it was it was sent out. And then we can close it out. And then number eighty-eight, develop uh P F A S G A C filtration media alternative vendor plan. Oh, that was looking at someone other than. That's December anyway, so. Alright, so we'll keep that one for later.
Okay, and then I have two more that you added today. Um one is Ron to contact Merrimack Town Management and D P W. For the meeting with D O T and D E S. Uh for November, and then investigation of. Solar power options for January.
Yeah, great, sounds good. Alright, so um what do we got here? Old business? Next? Anybody have any old business?
I guess I'm gonna be jumping on quick on the conversation we had earlier about billing. You guys saw my email. Staff and and Don.
Yeah.
Basically, again, I was was holding. Ford with some complaints about um what some people perceive as unfair charges if they send the check out. In time technically, right, or uh the payment. And personally, I think one way to easily do away with a lot of those complaints is to basically say we we we've. Wait a week until we even check for payment. Right, until we until we validate or verify that payment has been made, which to us, to me, should have no in. Uh you know, should should have no negative influ- influence on us whatsoever. Yeah, we we delay for one week, maybe some cash flow potentially, but how much is it gonna be, right?
Can I ask a question? What is what is the, how does it work now? So you you send the bill out? At, when is it? Say, alright, so we're gonna read the meters the end of October.
Read the meters in October, our billing is actually the eleventh of November.
Okay.
So those, so our billing cycle is basically the eleventh to the eleventh is how our system works. And.
So they have until December eleventh to pay it?
Yeah, December eleventh.
Thirty days.
Month, correct, okay. That's kinda what I wanted to know, I didn't know.
And I know there's ample time, don't get me wrong, this is, this is, this is not a necessity, this is just. To 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 calm the waters.
We can do grace periods, and and I think Amy had done a whole spiel on this. Oh, I don't know. If Jill forwarded that out or not.
I don't think that was in the packet.
So basically, we can do individual.
But I do, I know, try to put back to.
Individual grace periods.
There was a.
Collectively, as everybody as a whole, then actually shifts our late fees and everything. And our billing cycle. Down too, so we're basically just, we'd keep chasing. The tail of the late.
Well, the grace periods included in thirty days, that's okay.
And it it is already, right? I mean, this is not.
Basically, she had given out, I think, forty-two examples of other water institutions.
I know, I know, I I don't, I don't always care what other districts do, I'm just saying that week doesn't hurt us. My opinion.
Shift our whole process. By giving everybody an extra week grace period instead of thirty days shifts our whole billing cycle. Because right now, the way that we.
Well, no, only those that are late. I'm not saying delay posting and and checking for payments or anything, I'm just saying until we done anybody, until we send out. And until we tack on a late fee, wait a week.
So we do our billing. If you're late. That late fee is on that bill.
Right, and but that's a procedural thing. We could also say we don't do it that week, and those that are late, we go through the process again a week later.
And it would miss that bill, so you would do that, so a late fee you'd get two months later.
That's my point, that's what I'm trying to achieve. I'm just trying to detach. The checking whether something has been paid and the application of a late fee from the very last day of the billing. You know, last last payment.
That would be, we'd have to send out late fee notices again, which we actually cut away from, because now we're about late.
No, we're going, it will go on the next bill then. It would just go on the next bill. So, think about it.
December.
I don't wanna drag out the meeting, think about it. All I'm saying is that basically when you, when you, when you, when you verify. Basically, the next day after the payment period ended, let let's just scenario, okay? The if if say, for example, billing payment period, or you know, the last day of payment was Friday, Monday got, Monday, you guys are going through the process. Checking if everybody paid, right? Well, those that didn't pay. You ignore that day. And you just book the payments, right, and 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 cancel out, you know, whatever balance stays on the account. Right, and then you apply the payment to the account, but then a week later, you go through and see who else is still late. And at that point, you issue, you you assess a late fee, right?
I think the problem was you're gonna run into is for people that. Oh, I understand the people you're trying to help, but the problem you're gonna run into is the people who are always late or are two or three bills behind. Then your next bill is gonna go out and it's gonna say you owe two sets of months.
No, 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 but no, because if they don't pay within that week, they're gonna still.
They're gonna have to rebuild, well, if, so when the second invoice, so you say I don't pay October. Well, then the November invoice goes out, it's gonna say I owe November and October.
That would be true either way. That would treat, no matter if it happens the same month or not. I I'm just saying. I I think staff should think about that and and you know, see if there's an option.
I don't remember exactly how Amy.
I've studied in other softwares and it was no problem, that's why I'm surprised that this is an issue for us.
One that's it has been a challenge. So I think procedurally. I don't know that she can do it, but like she did give examples by, I do not recall why, what she said in that email. I can, again, tomorrow morning, I can say, explain what you just said is that instead of assessing all eight fees. When we do the bill, we assess it five days later and it goes on to the next.
Either way, it goes to the next bill, right?
Why am I thinking it's more of a timing thing?
It goes on the next bill either way.
All of that. Is the five days to a late deal together?
Right. That's my point.
I don't remember.
I think it'd be better.
I I do remember saying that it it. We're not sending out seven late fees.
And that's the other one, right?
I know that was one of them.
Affecting the process. For those that paid like.
That was the other proposal that Amy made to basically open up the bylaws.
Yeah.
So staff can basically, you know, discretionary release, you know.
It's gotta be the bylaws to reverse a late fee.
Because it's in the bylaws right now.
Bylaws, only allow us to credit one. Ever.
Right.
So if we opened it up to doing crediting maybe once a year for a person. Then that allows, that gives those the opportunities.
I think it's more efficient to do it that way, Wolf, because now you're not asking the accounting staff to do all this stuff differently every month. You're only asking them to deal with. Whomever is late.
Maybe, maybe, uh from my experience, if you if you do procedurally and avoid it in the first place, you're probably gonna have less trouble, but uh. But uh because right now, I don't know how many calls you got about late fees that people felt were ungranted for. A couple of people come. Well, no, but right now.
I feel do that.
Get calls, they go on Facebook.
Yeah, they do, they do, but the thing is right now, because the 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 invoice frequency increased so drastically, right? Specifically, if you're only on a hydrant, right?
Yes.
If you're not an M V D customer and you only pay whatever fifteen bucks a month for your hydrant, you know, people are just really annoyed by that and.
And and and. Your suggestion of paying, you can still pay your quarterly amount. And it was to just go towards.
Right, but I don't think people realize it, and I know it's on the website, but it doesn't change a damn thing, pardon my French. You know, that's why I was saying early the other day, uh earlier, it would be a good idea to to try and use the invoices, and I know people don't read those either. But uh, you know. All we can do is try, right, but. Right, all we can do is try, so I think the 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 message that you can prepay, you know, a certain balance and basically eat that away. In the next, you know, a couple, a couple of months, especially specifically for hydrant customers would be a great message to send out. Maybe that's a Facebook campaign, maybe that's an email newsletter, maybe it's on the invoice, I don't care, but I think it would be great if you guys. Burst that out, right? And the other one is just a suggestion from me, one way or another, to avoid that we even have late fees because of this. This procedural delay that we sometimes have of stuff going down to Boston and, you know, the U S P S being a day or two late. You know, if people pay three days in advance before the period ends and then get tacked on with late fee, it doesn't sit well, right? Granted, they could have paid a week earlier, I recognize that. Doesn't change the fact that it doesn't sit well if they feel it paid on time. So I'm just looking for ways to avoid that.
We do have on the website that Merrimack's mail does not go to Merrimack.
I know. I know, but.
So that's an automatic three days right there.
I know all of that, but you know how the world ticks, the world, everything is Amazon, next day delivery by drone. And here we're talking about a three-day delay because of U S P S and people get tacked on a five-dollar late fee. It doesn't sit well with people. We can like that, we can not like that, we can pound on the bylaws, it doesn't sit well with people. Right?
What can I?
We can also decide not to care about that. I'm not saying we have to care about it. But I'm saying maybe there's simple ways to solve this problem, for example, by adding a one-week grace period.
Ask a silly question as a new commissioner, how do you want to go about changing the bylaws to say a late fee every year or something like that?
We would rewrite them, you'd vote, you'd have reads and then.
It's sort of like public hearing and everything.
Like a public hearing.
Uh it's a.
General leading role.
Which. Then maybe procedural change might actually be easier, right? Anyway, I'm just throwing it out there, if you wanna think about it, I wouldn't mind. If you guys wanna try and be creative and and.
To kinda flip it around, what you're saying is we keep everything the way it is now, instead of telling everybody your payment is due.
Thirty days, your payment.
Thirty days.
Five days.
Payments due, well, no, I was gonna say your payments due twenty-five days.
Oh, that's exactly right.
Payments due in twenty-five days, but you don't actually look until it's late until they.
Oh, I kinda like that better.
That is a bylaw as well.
Oh.
It isn't, cuz we. Monthly.
But but it's basically.
voted on the annual meeting as well.
It's it's the same shoe, just inside out, right, so.
But I've never heard that one before.
German expression. I just figured it shouldn't be so hard to solve that by adding some mechanism to add a grace period, it doesn't hurt us one bit. But it eliminates that you guys have to, that I have to deal with.
The uh forgiveness, so I don't know if that is a.
I will look too.
That it maybe by law, just like, I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head.
I kinda wanna maybe revisit this, maybe we should make it an action item.
Action item.
There's a lot of information in um Amy's email.
There is.
And we didn't really have a chance to. Look at it, yeah, you know, so.
I I still think that this is a staff issue.
Yeah.
Right, and you guys should. Be tasked to think about this, and either say, you know what, this really doesn't work for us because of this and that and that reason, and then we can agree, right, or not? Or you guys come with a creative solution that works and we're like, okay, let's do it or not, right?
So you're saying the problem is that someone's writing a check and putting it in the mailbox.
And it's not.
Before the, before the the.
We expect her to hit it there in three days.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
And and people argue, for example, the I R S, for example, doesn't look at when.
When it's postmarked.
Exactly, right, and that's what people argue, right, if the I R S can't do it, why can't M V D and. Now you can, you can pound on the bylaws and on on the rules that we have set out twenty years ago, how many years ago? And we can pound on that and continue to say, well, we're not the I R S, right? Or we can say we go with the time.
It it probably took three days to get here.
Yeah, right, or we go with the time and look at it, right, and see, maybe we can come up with a creative solution.
Let's look at that as well in the bylaw, because I don't know if it calls out. Whether it's postmarked or not, so maybe that's just something that a practice we could do.
I don't know, I didn't look into it indeed.
We don't get postmarks of anything we.
Right.
That's a lockbox, right?
Or the lockbox.
Postmark.
I already dragged this out for fifteen minutes, so. Would you guys agree to add an action item?
I think, yeah, I don't know how you wanna word it.
Late fees.
Staff to propose.
Ideas on late fees.
Well, staff to propose how to.
Alternative ideas for assessing late fees.
Yeah.
How's that, Amanda? Been following it?
I can work with that, and who is that going to, Kristen?
And I'd also put Amy on there, cuz she's the one that's got the software that constriction's.
My name on there as well. We want a uh.
You might wanna just write staff.
We don't have to have this overnight, let's put it as an action item, let's give it. I have no problem if we give this two months. Right, take your time.
When you come up with something, then we can discuss it out of. Yeah, yeah.
But two months is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
That works. That's a good point you talked about.
We put together a support group for all those.
Sorry, Wolf.
Makes me feel bad, but as soon as I get the email, I run upstairs, pay the bill and walk away.
Seriously, three bucks?
Yeah.
It says, I think, which one is cheaper, the late fee or the credit card fee?
The credit card fee.
Credit card fee.
Credit card fee is cheaper, just in case anyone's watching.
Yeah.
A dollar, like seventy-five.
Okay.
Alright, moving on, any other old business? Um, let's see.
You know, uh allow me one more comment on that. I recognize that this is very, very. Low on many people's priority. But look at what M V D is perceived like today versus what it was perceived like five years ago. And I think things like this are part of that perception, that change of perception. So I apologize, you know, if this might be a little bit anal.
No, I think it's, I think it's good, I think I.
I recognize in 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 the minuteness in itself, it looks like, what, why are we talking about this, right? Seven people in the room, right? Five, six, seven, whatever. Call him, Amanda, but. I I think we underestimate about, you know, what that does to perception, right, and and the combined. List of changes in total are changing the perception of M V D.
I appreciate the amount of time you spend replying to Facebook comments and B D's behalf, because. You are, like, you always say stuff, and I was like, yeah, what he's.
Well, I'm not gonna let somebody drag five years of work that we did in the in the month. So.
I'm just not as eloquent as you are when you. That's why I let you do it.
I would have thought if I, it it's, oh, it's due tomorrow, put it in the mail today. Then I met the criteria, that's the way I think, cuz that's the way like everything else goes, but.
It's a story of my tech.
And then you tell someone to look at a bylaw, you know, they're not gonna look at a bylaw, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I I see your point. Alright, anything else? Uh the only other old, well, this new business. Probably new business, any new business? I'll let anybody else go.
A very quick one on on old business. Um we had in last month, I think it was, a non-public meeting with an action item. Of. Carrie. And we haven't heard anything back from that.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about.
Right.
A couple of other things, but not in public, but.
She was supposed to draft and review a couple of things. Review first and then draft something, and we haven't heard a word about that. We can, you know, maybe the chair can talk to you. Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, I'll follow up on it after. All right, new business, um, anybody have any business to bring up? I just got one little thing about, um, I like the daily totals that we get for the month, for the demand at all the wells.
There's no unit on the way, by the way, we have no idea if that's a million gallons, or is that?
It's true, too.
I just realized that after all these years.
I'd like to know, since we have a wholesale agreement with Pennachuck, like, can we tabulate in the same manner how much water? We're using on a daily basis from the interconnect?
We haven't been using any.
We haven't turned it on yet, have we? We didn't turn it on all summer, did we?
But you're right, there's a column missing here for that.
Yeah, cuz that, I think it should be.
When we add, when we turn it on, add a column for him?
We can actually, we can. Because we're getting credits right now, so.
Is that number generated automatically? At the Pennachucks?
It's a minimum charge based on the invoices, based on the number of days, so they're beat to beat.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the daily usage. I don't care about the tracking the fees right now, I want to know what, how much, why, I look at this and I'm seeing. Where most of our water is coming from and everything, and I know we haven't been using water from Pennachuck, but. I know that we had at some.
This summer. Early on, I think, just to, just to flush out the hydrant and try out that hydrant that we had.
It would just help me track, because the other thing, and we have this wholesale agreement, which we're paying a flat rate on. This part of our charge, then part of the other charge is on demand. And I know we're limited to an average of two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. When we get into next summer's month, summer months, I'm gonna wanna know. How much we have in the bank there to use, cuz we can go up to a half million a day if we need it, like for a route, if a well goes down. I don't know that we're tracking that right now, like, how much in the bank do we have that we can use?
That's on.
So on the invoice, but it's by dollars, I don't know how you. If you can help me figure out to convert it, I can give that number to. Amy and Shelley, I mean, Shelley just.
Well, do we not have a meter?
Though there is a meter, right?
Is it on a skater that populates the daily? But when it's not zero.
I think his point is simply we're missing a column here.
Yeah.
That's the simplest it is. That gives us the readout of the meter of Pennachuck.
They're they're giving us credits, right? And then when we start using, it's gonna go against. So we want to track that as well. It is what to skate, and we will be able to.
Does it, what, all these other numbers, it's spitted out at midnight? Okay, well, two, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
That's our daily, that they go in the morning, they they write down meter reads.
Oh, so that's manual?
It's manual, same thing with.
Okay.
Right now, I mean, they're stopping down there.
Peter can keep us that report?
Well, it's part of it. It probably can. But it, this is something that is part of the rounds, we want them to be looking at. Going into these plants daily and, you know.
That's true.
Hearing and, you know, smelling and and all that, so.
That makes sense, okay.
When we start using the wholesale water, I think I'd like to see that. Cuz without seeing that, you're not looking at, like, the daily total here. I'm saying, all right, we're only using two point eight million gallons a day, that's pretty light, but I don't know.
Want to see the, what we've got baked so far.
Let's get that, we'll get that in there and then we'll figure out, um, yeah.
Okay.
And there was a rate increase, with a dollar. Dollar three, four?
For Pennachuck.
For the wholesale. What was it, ninety-two cents before or something?
If we're asking for things on this random sheet, um, under like the total for the month? Could you give me an a- a daily average for the month? Like, this is, if this is just an express sheet, could you throw an average under there and average the? That would be awesome.
Thirty-one days, whatever.
Yes. I like it.
Should we make an action item on this, or are you guys good with, uh?
It's all the way to the back, before the graphs.
It's after. It's after the, uh. After the action items list. Maybe you can get that, you get it?
Thank you.
And you want the daily total under every, under every column, right?
What? No, I just want like.
Just a total.
I just want the average for the month, kind of, or, yeah, the average, like, daily flow for the month.
The average of the total.
Yeah, the average of the total.
All right, um, let's see. Uh, I wanted to point out Lynette's email in this packet, just because the relevance is that. She's saying PFBA is present in the seventy-five percent port of both lead vessels at. Well, two and nine. So it's gonna be breaking through the the lead vessels soon. So just keep an eye on that, cuz we may need, cuz once it breaks through the lead vessels. Then we're gonna start planning to change those lead vessels media within eight months, based on our procedure. So it's at the seventy-five percent port now, it's not through the lead vessels. We have two lead vessels here, we have two lag vessels. So just keep an eye on that, I just wanted to, um, point that out.
Are you saying that once it breaks through, that's when the eight-month clock starts? No.
Yeah.
I thought the eighth. The vessels go for eight months.
Once you see breakthrough, you change or within.
Whatever's, whatever's longer, right, well, but no.
They go for at least eight months.
Oh, so it's from the time.
So, so doesn't, wait a minute. So since. Eight months, so these vessels went online in March. So those lead vessels should be changed out in November, cuz that's eight months. Or am I crazy? I know we went back and forth on this policy.
But I thought if we could get eight longer.
Yeah, we could, if we can go longer, we can go longer.
I thought it was eight, I thought it was eight months or until breakthrough.
Or whatever, I thought it was whatever was later, so we could potentially get more than eight months.
Correct, if there wasn't breakthrough.
Right.
But if we're at seventy-five percent and we're due in November, then we probably should. Start the process.
If there's seventy-five percent of the media left?
No, it's half the seventy-five percent.
How many months?
No, I'm going the wrong way. Six or seven months.
It went online in March, right?
Yes.
But this is also PFBA, right? You're talking about PFBA, right? Which is not regulated and the tolerance.
Right.
Are we following our procedure?
Procedure I thought was eight months, or if we could go longer.
Right, so I was, I was probably wrong, it doesn't start eight months from the time it breaks through, it starts eight. Eight months from the time it went online. Or if it can go longer, if it hasn't broken through. Think it says.
Procedure say which breaks, what breaks then?
Anything.
Anything, okay.
Cuz the goal is non-detect.
And we change it to the first breakthrough.
Yeah. So if that's the case. We're already looking at.
If we schedule it now, maybe we can get them there by January.
I think, I think what it says is we, we, we begin to get into the process of changing.
Right.
If any of those triggers happen. So, um, seeing how it took, what, a year on the last one, we might wanna like start planning. If there's the profile we gotta do, and that takes, you know.
Yeah, if those are the first.
The whole sequence of all of this stuff.
This is the first change out of that.
That.
Facility, so yeah, we probably, you probably have to do the.
The profile. Is there a reason we couldn't do the profile now versus later? What is the profile? Is it just the, um?
So that that gets pulled in, uh.
It's a, it's a GAC grab, right?
Basically, yeah, so we'll, we'll shut it down, shut it, shut the vessels down. We'll, uh, open up the hatch, or actually pull the port off.
Okay.
We cord in, filled up.
You take a GAC core out of the tank, set it off.
Make sure we can get a pint or whatever, whatever it is, and then, um. Those two pipes, then we send that off to Desert Tech. Which goes to, to the, uh. Pennsylvania, whatever the, the, uh.
There's a lab there.
Metals and all of that.
I I'm just pointing out that.
As we done before, they'll do the.
Yeah. Schedule and change out and all that stuff, so.
That core doesn't have to be like in profile of the GAC media, right? Can it be disturbed? Can it be mixed, jumbled up or something, or, or does it have to be like literally like a core?
So on four and five, we actually had a little can that was off to the side that the water ran through separately. You didn't have to connect to the vessel, some reason the rest, the other vessel, they've got this can, so. We just, that was the way we pulled the port off, stuffed it in and.
Which port do you pick? The top? Probably have.
No, they, I think there was a seventy-five port because it was closer, it was easy to reach, it wasn't something that was.
Okay. All right, I mean, I'm just pointing out that it's at seventy-five percent there, so just keep track of, uh. Make sure we're on track with the policy. The well seven and eight, what is it saying? Vessel one is the lag PFBA is breaking through, what? Let me see here, it says a well seven and eight waste water treatment plant. PFBA is the only tested compound present in the finished water. It has been present since January of this year.
I was surprised to see that, too.
So PFBA is still coming through that treatment plant right now, even after we just replaced.
Sent for reactivation.
I was wondering if that was a copy and paste error from last.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to go back and look at that.
He just replaced it.
We switched it on, uh, the lag.
The lead media is new.
Yeah, May thirtieth.
Uh, that lag became the lead.
So she said vessel two, which is the lead, has been in the lead position since May thirtieth. Didn't say what the, um, anything breaking through that, but. She did say PFBA is the only tested compound present in the finished water, it has been since January.
Is that maybe before the media came back?
I'm wondering is, is.
So then now it's actually going, so maybe that was between bef- before the media came back, back online?
Could be.
Could be, what, what, can you clarify that? What I'm wondering is, cuz there was PFBA in the, in the lag vessel right now. Cuz it got into the lag vessel before we changed the media in the lead vessel, so. It could be bumping off the PFBA in the lag vessel, so we may, we may still be getting PFBA in the finished water. Even though PFBA is not even breaking through the lead vessel. Because it's PFBA in a vessel that could be getting.
We have a clean.
We have a clean lead. Oh, it's a clean lag.
It's a lag, so that.
Yeah, so that mustn't be right.
It can't be right.
All right, just confirm that then. I'm glad you, you corrected me on that one.
We need like a master spreadsheet of all the vessels, it says this one's lead, this one's lag, and when it was last changed out. So that we like, like a di- like, I, like a diagram of all the vessels, and because I feel like this is super confusing.
Mark, mark down on that list.
It is, it's just you have to.
But you have to look for.
Maybe, I don't know, maybe we have Underwood become familiar with policy and they. They should be the ones like telling us, like, oh, by the way, you're here, so you gotta consider changing out this media based on your procedure. See, this is a staff thing, really, more than. All right, well, I'm mentioning it, cuz we need to do it. I know, but we're, it's not feeling we're managing the process as opposed to being informed about the process. I don't mean to be critical, I know, it's important stuff, but. You kind of feel like branch management. Yeah. I'm, I'm pointing out these things in case we weren't aware, it's really all doing, so. All right, that's all I wanted, and Jamie already mentioned the whole thing about well nine. PFOA being at like thirty-something, which is really strange.
Is that?
In the raw water.
It was the raw water, is that only one sample that showed really high?
Well, the one from June, so it was that non-detect in May, it was at, uh, about eight, seven in June, and it's at. Thirty. But he had one that went back down, so he must have a more current one.
I don't know that I, like, if you get one sample that's super high out of nowhere, and then the next one's, I don't know that I trust it.
I think the next one was twenty.
I, it might be a blown sample, I mean, that's just my thought.
Why, is this graph, the number, the, the dots aren't, the lines aren't connected? The very last page of the packet.
There's a dot here, it's not connected.
Yeah, cuz this. Might be something, um, maybe Lynette forgot to, um.
Next the dots.
Yeah, and actually.
Yeah, it's the same one.
For well, uh, nine. But yeah, also in the legend for well nine, it refers to well eight. So. Maybe, maybe just have her pay a little more attention to the, to the graph on that one. But definitely find out what the deal is on, what, seven and eight.
Well, actually, in that list of PFAS. Levels, this one here. Vessel. One offline for three months for the change out.
Yes.
Well, and that would explain it because.
So then.
The, that means the lead vessel that was already Latin with.
It's broken through already.
It had broken through and we took the lag one off because we had to refurbish it, and, and this is what, remember when a year ago, when we had talked about that?
It's always gonna be eight, eight months.
No, no, even worse, we said.
You'll never catch up.
No, I remember that a year ago, we basically said, I basically said, if we allow. We had discussion whether or not we wanna have PFBA break through and through the lead vessel and. You know, load up the lag vessel, just in order to find out how much of the regular, you know, the, the short, the long chain PFAS, we can load onto the lead vessel. And I had said back then, there's a good chance that we then end up with a lead and lag vessel both Latin with PFBA. And we have to replace both initially right away at the same time, and I think that's kind of what we're seeing here. Not, you know, not to be right, but what I'm saying is we probably should have planned for both vessels to be replaced. Like that, because, because of that experiment that we ran. We built up the lag vessel with PFBA long before the other ones even broke through. The lead vessel. And that's why we now have for seven and eight PFBA in the water.
So then, then PFBA must be breaking through the lead vessel at well seven and eight right now.
Right, yeah. Because we switched the lag to the lead vessel, but the lag, the lag vessel before it became lead vessel was already loaded up with the breakthrough from the original lead vessel. Cuz we ran the experiment on the lead vessel.
Yep.
So this, this actually makes total sense, and for some reason we kind of missed it.
So I assume the lead vessel, with the lead vessel that's at well seven and eight now. When did that get betted? That was original?
Yep.
So that was much more than eight months ago. So basically, we gotta change the, the media out in the vessel now?
Now. And we should have planned for that a while ago.
Yeah, so it's a little tricky to track all this.
Well, no, this is, this is especially tricky in the first one, because the first one we allowed PFBA to break through the lead vessel. And we didn't replace it at the time, to make it in the lead vessel, because we wanted to see how much of the PFOA and all of.
Right.
Which was kind of my point at the time, where, where I was not in, in fact, I think I even voted against it at the time, because I didn't see any sense in that.
Yeah.
Um, we just wanted to know, but because we had always said. And actually, I think the change out policy came after, so in our defense, we decided formally after. And actually, I think the change out policy came after, so in our defense, we decided formally after that decision was made.
Right.
That we're gonna look at any compound, right?
Right.
At any level.
And it was.
No, no, we, we did it on all of them.
Well, we're not doing it at Wells two and nine.
No, but we did it at seven and eight too.
It might have. Yeah, I don't, I, so I guess it sounds like we probably should. Schedule a change out, what's, is that in the budget for this? Yeah, it's definitely, we're in the next.
It's definitely, I believe, one in the budget, one out of the budget.
Okay.
Then four, five are reimbursed by.
Yeah.
Settlement O and N.
I think if we're following our procedure, then we have breakthrough. First confirm with Lynette that we have breakthrough. The present lead vessel at well seven and eight.
Yep.
And if we do, then I think we gotta start planning to. Change that media out, cuz it's been there more than eight months. That's original. All right, so there was value in belaboring this discussion. Sorry about that. It's been, glad you brought that up too. All right.
Uh, but it goes to show you that we, we're looking at too much data in, almost. And we're kind of losing, you know, seeing the trees in the forest and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have to think about. Yeah.
And this is why.
Eight wise and.
Simplified version of the vessels and where the vessels are at.
And.
You, you need some kind of.
Why I'm thinking we should have.
Lose you how right everything works. And where, yeah, seriously, yeah.
Probably until, I would, I agree with that, probably until get to a point where we have like a regularly, cuz I mean, we're still. It's still a new process, you know what I'm saying? It's not.
I mean, to be honest with you.
It's not like we have a full schedule.
Underwood looking at these graphs, it needs more to them than anyone else, cuz they develop the graphs, they know, you know what I mean? I don't know that, I mean, I was looking at it and I don't even, I didn't even really. And I don't know a thing with either, but more eyes on it. It's not like they have to do a whole new engineering service request, it's just that, hey, whenever you notice that eight months have gone by since the. Vessel was bedded and it's br- it's, you have breakthrough. Let us know. You know?
I think your, your software, your asset management software can also tell us that, right? Yeah, you can probably, you can probably set a timer, right? Set an expiration time, right?
All right, that's good. So just follow up with Lynette on that to confirm it. I'm pretty sure we're having breakthrough there, I would imagine. If it was going into the finished water with no.
Uh, it shouldn't be going into finished water right.
Not now. Right. Right, okay. All right, so with that.
I don't think we've actually had a. Tomorrow, Thursday, we're gonna sample, so we'll actually have a sample round on the new media. So we don't have a.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. And I know it's diluting out into the system anyways, it's zero, it's been non-detect of everything in the distribution system. Um, all right, so superintendent report.
CT divers are in all the wells, uh, except for well three. That's the watershed management project. Um, as of ten four weeks. So that's a conductivity beam for the salt project. But we could all put in. Um, at the clear well at seven and eight. Was actually rusted, the hatch was rusted and replaced and. This, uh, it was cleaned as well.
On the original well or on the new treatment plant?
We, we have uh. The clear well itself in the, for the iron manganese plant. We've never cleaned that. It was a hat, we opened up our hatch, we figured we were gonna clean it, wanted to clean it, the hatch was all rusted and kind of started breaking apart. And so had that repaired and actually ended clear well cleaned as well. Here and out hydrant is stalled, that was uh, done on ten.
Is that the, is that the one that a customer requested?
Yeah.
Excellent, I thought I wanted this, okay, that is finished.
Ten six, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That was installed. And if you recall, the big issue was every place we wanted to put it, it was these kind of utilities and everything else, so.
Cool, so Brian, thank you, please.
We have a leak at well nine. Uh, that we're gonna be hopefully repairing sometime this week.
In the piping somewhere in the.
No, no, it's on the, it's in the pipe, it's from well nine, it's that fuse pipe we use. So we worked it out with Gene and uh, contractor. They're gonna do the work, we're gonna, we are gonna. Pay for materials and.
So it's between well nine and the treatment plant?
Yep.
Okay.
But it's in the, it's on a pipe that we had fused. To do the pump tests and so, so they basically took that pipe, threw it in the ground, he did pressure test it, both in the ground and above ground and it's fine. It is on a weld and. They're not supposed to break on the weld, that's supposed to be stronger than the pipe.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so.
We're, we're gonna.
Who did the welding on that originally? Really? As we're out of warranty on that, probably no warranty, yeah. Okay.
Uh, November seventh, we're gonna go to this uh, planning board to present the CAP. Months ago.
What day is that?
Uh, November.
Seven?
Seventh, thank you.
Election day. All right.
I have, I had some other stuff, but we've covered them already.
All right. Um. Then I guess the only other things are questions from the press and public. No public here, it's no press here, is there anybody uh, in the waiting room or anything? I don't think.
You have to click on attendees. Or participants, yeah. And then attendees, but it's zero, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's zero. All right, then that concludes the meeting. The next meeting will be on uh, Monday, November twenty. And uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.